Hi, August and Erica. Can you guys hear me? Maurice, can you hear me? Maurice, can you hear me?
Yes.
Maybe that's night.
Okay.
So I'm having.
Yeah, now I can hear you. I just wanted to make sure.
We're disputed.
Okay, thank you.
We're live.
And Maurice, I understand that the director is not here, Marcus here, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
She should be on screen.
Okay. Um, I also believe that the, that the four of us will make a quorum, correct? This is the group for today?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Correct to the, the number of people. It would be yours.
Okay. Well, it's nine o'clock, so I think we can go ahead and get started. We actually have a fairly short agenda today. So I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Director Fields to, to start the meeting.
Read the preamble. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting laws and section 101-021 of the codified ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city, of the City Planning Department conducts its meetings according to Robert Schule's order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. I'm sorry. Please, I'm trying to say. Starting to read this far.
And yeah.
That would be on the struggle bus too.
Be like two inches from the screen.
Yeah, I thought it would be a little bit bigger, but I'm struggling right now. So it's going to burn a lot.
We're not much, but okay.
All right, here we are. Um, okay. So all boards and commissions under the purview of City Planning Department conducts its meetings according to Robert Schule's order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Recusal from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise your hand feature before asking questions or making a comment. The raise your hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop or mobile version of, mobile version and activate it by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When you're finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking the raise your hand icon again and mute your microphone. You will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat, I'm sorry, the chat feature can be activated by clicking chat button located at the bottom of the web X stream. Call users can unmute by using star six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebX platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. Our request to speak on a particular matter submitted through proper channels have been considered. You have also received emails from those who have provided written comments on the particular matter. Proper channels for comments are listed below. Communication with members of the body must follow proper channels for consideration. All comments received by the stated deadline are collected by City Planning staff and disseminated to the commission members prior to in-schedule meeting.
Okay, thank you. Michael, can you call the roll?
Anthony.
Present.
Demme.
Present.
Luca.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
Greg Scott. Slight. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. First item is to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. I believe they're on the desk there and they've been sent out in advance. So we can take a second or if anyone has any questions, then we'll need a motion.
I'm over approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Demme.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes. Motion carries. All right, first item is a lot split and consolidation. It's a permanent parcel number 003-09-003. This is at 1300 West 54th Street. Is Greg Scott here to present this?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Present?
Yes.
Okay, um, all right, so this is my home studio. That the parcel B you see here is a raised parking lot. Had no use to me or the neighborhood, sets upon the property. And I'd like to get a lot split approved. The property, according to this split drawing, would be 35 feet wide and a little under the square footage required. But the intent is to have a single-family home built on it and there's already some people who want to do that. And I don't know if Jimmy Spencer sent a, a comment down. She has indicated her support for a split. And here I'm showing an area of view.
Is it your intent to develop this or sell it?
To sell it.
Okay.
There's a potential buyer who wants to build a single-family home.
For the most part, we, we prefer to see a site plan and how this would be situated and not speculative, speculatively. Sell this.
That would require a potential buyer to hire an architect when clearly we know we can do the split. I think I could walk you through roughly how a structure would fit on the property, if you like.
Madam Chair to the applicant, are there any more context photos? This seems to be sort of isolated from residential. I, it's hard for me to tell where this, where this is located and how it's.
If you go back to, go back to the area, I'll, I'll help you have a plan. Okay, right there. So two structures on the other side of the road there. One is Robert Mashkey's house and the other belongs to Chuck Vince. There's residential, you see the Red Brick Road?
Yes.
There's residential all the street on both the west side. And on the east is a seven-unit condo structure that was built about eight years ago.
Thanks, I was a little disoriented.
And then the large commercial building is HKM. It is owned now by Carnegie. HKM is just doing a leaseback at the moment. That will eventually be torn down and turned into either residential or mixed-use residential. I've talked to Carnegie several times and they're kind of sitting and waiting to see what happens in the rest of the neighborhood. But that will, that will, that big building almost certainly will come down in some like the next few years.
And Madam Chair to the, to the applicant, what's, what's the urgency presently then?
The selling.
So.
Opposed to.
Yeah, the selling.
What?
No, no, I, if there's other potential development, I was just wondering if that could be factored into, to this entire conversation. But you want to unload it because you don't require it anymore, or at least that portion of it.
I don't require it. Now I've got, I've got somebody interested in it. I've been wanting to possibly sell it for the last year or so. And initially tried to sell it to Carnegie because it would be contiguous with their property they bought. But they were not interested at the start.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the lot split, permanent parcel number 003-09-003, located at 1300 West 54th Street.
Second.
A motion and a second. Can you call the roll?
Anthony.
Yes.
Demme.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Uh, no, I'm going to vote no, just from a policy point of view. I don't. Uh, motion passes. Next item is another lot split and consolidation at 113-02-072. This is at 3540 East 72nd Street. Hannah Cohen is here from Knesset.
Hi, good morning. I also have Van Vanderlin here from DV Resource Group as our civil engineer, in case there's any questions on the specifics. Um, just a brief history, this is for the Trailside Development, which is a project that Third Federal Bank and developed in conjunction with Slavic Village Development Corporation in the city of Cleveland. They started it in 2009. They assembled the land, cleared it, remediated it as it was a brownfield site and have a master plan. So they've since been building it in phases. If you go to the next slide, you can see some of the current development that we've had there. So right now we are building phase six. We have five homes under construction. We're here right now planning for the next three phases. We're calling this phase seven, so we'll be splitting that parcel you saw highlighted in yellow on the previous slide into 15 sublots for 15 new homes. And our plan is to begin building the next five of those homes on East 71st Street this fall. So those are the homes you'll see to the north. This is the site plan for what we are intending to build.
Madam Chair. Um, to the applicant, um, my, my question is, I, from, from the context that you showed, all those houses actually look exactly the same. I was wondering if, whatever you're proposing in the future, there's some variation. You know, whether it's a box bay versus a regular bay or, or, or the porch is a little, it just, it just seems very static and mechanistic.
Yes, there are a few versions on the site already. I think these photos maybe just only have the one. But if you go to our site plan, there's a new model that Third Federal developed in conjunction with their architect on Echo Street. So those will be significantly different and they're a little bit larger in size. So those lots actually on Echo Street are conforming lots. They are not substandard. The other ones are a little bit narrower than typical. So we are trying to build some variation in, but ultimately Third Federal, who unfortunately couldn't be here for this meeting, they're driving the architecture on this project.
What's the sale price of these, just curious?
The phase that we're building right now, they sell for around 180. So Third Federal has a lot of assistance and benefits for these, these buyers. It gives them a very good price.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair to the applicant, is this a, a current PUD or, or is this outside what we're talking? Because I'm trying to understand what we're, what you're asking for, conditional use permit?
We're just asking for the lot split because some of the lots are substandard. We've got a 35-foot width on 71st and 72nd Street, which is consistent with the rest of the development that's already been built.
All right. I'm a little slow this morning. I apologize.
I'm, I'll move approval for the lot split for permanent parcel number 133-02-072, located at 3540 East 72nd Street.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Demme.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Is Shannon here for the next one? Shannon, are you here?
For Clark.
Good morning.
I got a hand with this.
Yeah.
Shannon is here. And Shannon, this is a zoning matter, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So just for the audience and those online, for zoning matters, which this conditional use is one, this is a public hearing. In the cases of zoning matters, we first hear a presentation from staff. We will then hear sponsor testimony. Those who would speak to the, so the project could be the councilperson, the owner or the applicant. And then we'll open it up to public comment for the public hearing. We'll hear from proponents, those in favor of the zoning change, and then we'll hear from those who are opposed. You must sign in or if you're online, raise your hand. It'll ask you to state your name and address for the record. And we'll require that you keep your comments to three minutes or less if you're speaking publicly. Remember to address the chair on this matter, which is permanent parcel number 006-16-013 at 5412 Clark Avenue. So we'll turn it over to Shannon first. Go ahead.
Leanne, we, we lost you on the screen.
You lost me?
Hold on, we're, we're trying to reconnect. Sorry.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Well, I can hear you on my computer. Okay, here we go. We're back in.
We're back in.
Okay. Did you hear me read the instructions?
No, we did not.
No, we did not.
Okay, so I apologize. I will do it one more time. This is a public hearing for this rezoning matter, this conditional use. So first we'll hear from Shannon, who is, the staff will present first. Then we'll ask for any sponsor testimony. This could be the councilperson or the owner, the, the, who's proposing the zoning change. And then we will hear from, from the public proponents first and then opponents. You must state your name and address or sign in if you're in person or online. Just raise your hand if you're online and you'd like to speak and I will call on you in the order that, that they, that I see them. And please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Go ahead, Shannon.
Good morning. Shannon Leonard, Chief City Planner in our zoning section of City Planning Commission. So this is for, you guys saw this earlier this year, late last year, for 5412 Clark Avenue. It's a CMSD reconstruction. And so the existing conditions here is the parcel is a split zone between local retail or general retail into family residential. And then the existing school here is being proposed to be demolished or has been demolished and rebuilt. And because of that, this is the proposal that you all saw, and I think they're on design review today after this case. So just something to consider. And so the proposal here, the reason why we're here for the zoning matter is because in a pedestrian retail overlay, things like schools, places of worship, daycares, they're considered institutional uses. And so they require conditional use for, from you all to be in, in a pedestrian retail overlay now. The reason why they're also before you is because this is a complete demolition and rebuild. They're just bringing them into zoning compliance if you are to agree to the institutional use here. Additionally, the other reason they need a conditional use is because they do not have a pedestrian retail street frontage directly to the street frontage. It's positioned at the corner more so for functionality purposes. So for schools, they have a little bit different. The reason why they require the conditional use for the institutional use is because just out of sheer functionality, they don't necessarily meet with, meet some of the conditions of the pedestrian retail overlay. And so the conditions for the door not being directly on the frontage is the proposed use will occupy an existing building that lacks such entrance, and the addition of such conforming entrance is made infeasible by the configuration of the interior space. Or placement of pedestrian entrance in a location other than pedestrian frontage result in a more suitable pedestrian access. For the schools, they stated that this is necessary for the safety of their students as well as from visitors. And so that's it. They just need the conditional uses to become zoning compliant with the new construction for the institutional use, as well as the building that does not have a public pedestrian entrance directly on the street frontage. And I think there are several people here from the project that they want to speak.
Okay. So first, anyone who is representing the project, who would like to speak, please state your name. Is that Sarah?
Yes, good morning. I'm Sarah Clan with Robert P. Madison Architects. We are the architects working on this project. And I, I appreciate your hearing our, listening to our project, reviewing our project this morning. So we are, the current school sits quite a ways back from the street. So by moving our main building forward, we are trying to be more in compliance with the nature of the street, the retail nature of the street with buildings up at the sidewalk. So we have had a, had a school on this property for about a hundred years. So it's not a change in use, although it, it, the site is currently zoned to family. But there has been a school on this site for a very long time. As far as the entry not being directly off Clark, we did locate it at the corner of Clark and West 56 in order to kind of serve the pedestrians, the students who may be walking to school, as well as we have a lot of students who get dropped off in cars. And so a lot of the parents queue on West 56. So we're trying to address both the pedestrians and the students coming in cars. You can see on this plan that, that there's a, a large play area, and in the morning, a lot of the students will wait in there before they come into the building. So, so both students who walk and are dropped off in cars will wait in this large play area. And that's one of the main reasons that we've located the entry kind of on this northwest corner of the front portion of the academic wing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this conditional use? I assume the councilperson is in support of this?
Neighbor Planner is here.
Okay. Well, maybe, let's go through this and then we'll, we'll open it up for that. So now, anybody opposed to this conditional use? That would like to speak? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we'll close the public portion. Is there any other staffer that would like to speak to this in the community process?
Yeah, hello, it's Brittany Kavon, City Planner at West 72nd Street. Yeah, uh, this project. This is. This project came to design review yesterday, and it was approved by the committee. There were some, some just design things that we mentioned, like the front, the frontage of the main, the main building being adjusted, being some more glazing being done. But overall, it's a highly sought project, and it was approved by committee. City Planning supports it.
Thank you. Commission members, we'll close the public portion and ask if there are any questions, comments, discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I do have a question for Assistant Director Fields. Since this is a conditional use, I don't think our motion should include design elements, like add more glazing. Or is, or is that consistent? I'm trying to understand what.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can clarify, so they're the next design review case, and so basically essentially, conditional use or site plan specific. So basically, if you're giving them the conditional uses for this, then you can move on to the next case for the design elements more so.
So could, might I suggest we hear the design portion, then we vote on those concurrently? Would that be acceptable? Madam Chair?
Oh yeah, we can do that. We'll just need separate motions since we completed this portion. That's fine. Yeah, let's go ahead and hear the next case. In this instance, I assume that Sarah, you're here to speak to this. And anybody else? I'll need to swear you in, so do you swear to tell the whole truth? Or just tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, so we're here to see Northwest 2022-0027. This is a design review case specific to 5412 Clark Avenue. Okay, go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, good morning, everyone. So as we know from the previous issue, we are presenting the new Clark School. Currently on the site, there are two buildings, a main building which sits back toward the back of the site, and then an annex which just has a couple classrooms up toward Clark Avenue. Demolition of those two buildings was previously approved. This project came before the planning commission about a year ago for conceptual design review. And the reason it hasn't come back until now, if we could hold on this slide for a moment, is that the school district was acquiring a few parcels, three back on Train Ave. And you can see the site boundary there, and then two additional parcels over on West 53rd. And we'll see in future slides how those were used for some parking, for some water detention, and for some egress from the site. And then that retail overlay is shown on the, in the yellow box up on Clark Ave. Next, please. So these are some context photos showing the nature of this site. We do have industrial on both West 56th and on Train. You can see that in Slide 2. We've got commercial up in Slide 1 along Clark Ave. The remaining photos on this page are from Clark Ave. These primarily show the annex building and that canopy that leads to the site. Next, please. Some more context showing more of the retail on Clark Ave, and then also the Clark Rec Center at photo number one, which is just the next block down to the west. Next, please. And then these are the houses that are going to be demolished on the north side of the site. There are two houses at photos one and two, and then photo three is an, was an empty lot that has also been required by the school district. Photo four shows the parcels from West 53rd that have been acquired. And then photo five is the alley that runs behind the houses on West 53rd between those houses and our site. So we're actually annexing an alley on the north edge of the site where we've acquired the parcels, but this alley will remain. Next, please. And this is just what the, when, we were kind of doing a refresher, since you haven't seen this project in a while. These were interior photos of the existing Clark School. And you can see in the upper right how, you know, crowded these classrooms are, and, and this will become, you know, a, a talking point in some upcoming discussion. Next, please. So the next couple slides are just a refresher, since you haven't seen this project in a while. This was the site plan that we presented at the conceptual phase. And you can see, we didn't have, we had not yet acquired the parcels up on Train. We were hoping those middle two, they were kind of in, in negotiations, but it's taken a while to, to complete the process. And then out onto West 53rd. At the time we present this conceptually, we were talking about bus drop off on Clark. Since then, because the city felt that that might obstruct the bicycle lane along there and bus traffic, we have moved both bus drop off and pickup to that lot on the southeast corner. Next, please. Again, this was the conceptual elevation at that time. You can see where the canopy to the entry on the left, that's that facing toward the north where the main entry is. So this area has been revised based on comments from the conceptual review, and glazing in the stairwells has also been revised since the conceptual review. Next, please. And this is looking from West 56th further north back at that main entry. So again, the canopy has been revised since that time, and we've added glass at the entry vestibule since then. Next, please. So this is our site in context now. As we said, the, the building used to sit much further north on the site. The building has been located to the south to address Clark Ave and to be more in line with the other buildings along Clark Ave. By code, with overlay retail, where the setback is supposed to be a maximum of five feet. Our building sits back fourteen feet, and that was a request by the city to leave room for a potential future multipurpose trail. As I said, Clark Rec Center is just down the street, and kind of to the northwest on our slide is the Zone Rec Center and the Red Line Greenway. So there are hopes to connect to both those locations. As you can see, we have two play areas. We have a pre-K play on the right on the east side of the building, and an upper grade play area on the west side of the building. There's a, on the west, a playground also with a large play area. Some of that is hard surface for inclement weather and also for particular games that the kids like to play with balls that, you know, they like to bounce and things like that, so. And then a green play area as well to the north of that. As I said before, a lot of the parents queue on West 56th to drop off students. So what we've tried to do to alleviate some of the backup is to pull the parent drop off all the way around to Train Ave. Parents would enter Train Ave, and they can drop off along that sidewalk on the south side of the parking lot. And then they could exit the site out to West 53rd. So that was the reason for acquiring those parcels over on West 53rd. The parking that's right up near the front entrance is a visitor parking. And then pre-K parking would be down in the southeast corner of the building of the site. And the buses would come in first in the morning, then they would drop off and leave, and then the pre-K parents come in, and they actually would stop long enough to walk their students in, and then they would leave. So I think that's everything on that. Next slide, please. So this is our site showing landscaping. We are going to have to take down some trees for the location of the new building, but we are adding in a lot of new trees. The district is really trying to be cognizant of species that have done well in the past and not include species that have not done well. There are also, instead of including some of the shrubs and low ground cover that really have not thrived using more ornamental grasses, and we'll see images of those further into the presentation. So again, you can see that pre-K play area, and there are bike racks over on the east side of the building. The upper grade playground, again, on the west side, there is an outdoor learning area in the northeast of that large play area. And then we do have underground water retention in the southeast parking lot, and we have some above grade water detention on that north side along Train. And that would be fenced for the safety of the neighborhood and the students. And we do, around all our play areas, we use a four-foot-high ornamental fence. Back at the above-grade detention, we would use a six-foot black vinyl coated chain link fence. And the, the water, the intent and the way this is designed is the water would only stay in there. You know, it, it has to sit in there to allow the sediment to drain out, but then, you know, most of the time the water evaporates, and so it would be during the summer, dry a good bit of the time. And then again, we do have bike parking up at the main entrance, and we'll see that in a future slide. Next, please. So these are some of the plantings that we're using, the ornamental grasses, which currently are along Clark Ave and near the main entry and over by the play areas, and some of the trees that are being used. Next, please. And then just some additional images of the ornamental grasses. Next, please. And the trees that will be used on site. Next, please. These are some of the site elements. The bike rack image that's shown, we are actually going to be switching that out. CMSD really likes to use fun, colorful bike racks, sometimes in the shapes of animals or other fun ideas like that. So that will, the bike racks will be switched out from that standard U to something more colorful and fun. We locate benches and trash receptacles at our play areas. This is the ornamental fencing that is used around our play areas. In the lower left, this is the painted concrete furniture we use at our outdoor learning areas. And then the types of play equipment that will be on our playgrounds, both for the upper grades and the preschool, K and PK. Next, please. These are elevations of the building, and you can start to see here how the canopy has changed. In the upper right slide, you can see where more glass has been added at the vestibule and how that canopy is now coming around from the main entrance all the way up to Clark to create more of a presence up on Clark. And then you can kind of see that in that south edge elevation on the upper left as well. Next, please. And this is just a section showing our three-story academic wing, and then a building section showing the heights and relationships of the gymnasium. That middle height is the student dining area, and then the three-story academic wing on the right. So Clark is on the right in that image. These are the floor plans. You can see on the, the Clark end is to the bottom of the screen. We've got admin in pink, academic areas in the green, student dining and the kitchen in the yellow, and the gym is in blue. Next, please. This is the second story of the academic wing. Next, please. And third floor of the academic wing. Next. So this is the elevation from Clark, and this is where you can start to get an idea of where the glass was added on the stairwells to prevent, or, I'm sorry, provide a much more open look into the school, how that canopy has brought, been brought around to address Clark. And you can see the bike, covered bike parking under that canopy. And again, this is where those will be switching out the standard black U for the colorful bike, bike parking. Next, please. Oh, and you can see here how the building has been held back for that future multipurpose trail. Next, please. This is looking from West 56th back at the main entry, the canopy, the large glassed-in vestibule. Next, please. Oh, and actually, could we go back one second, please? So if you can see kind of in the middle of the slide, a blue canopy. This is an after-hours school entry. And so the gymnasium, the student dining, and the media center are all in the more north wing. And so at nighttime, either for school, you know, presentation, parent nights, whatever, or for community use, this door would be used rather than the main entry. So there are doors between that academic wing and the northern wing. So the academic wing can be closed off, and then this would be the after-hours entry. So the community, there is a, CMSD does have a joint use agreement. And so the community can use those gyms, student dining, and media center spaces. And, um, so the community can use those gyms, student dining and media center spaces. Next, please. This is looking at the east side of the building at the pre-K, uh, playground. And then on the left side of the slide, you can see a little bit of canopy. This is that, um, door. So this is where, uh, kids can exit the school after school to come for the, this is where the bus drop off and pickup is. And then this is where the PK parents will park and walk their students into the building. Next, please. And this is looking a little further back on, uh, West 56th to see that large play area. And again, you see that main entry and kind of behind the trees in the middle, that, um, after hours entry. Next, please. So this is signage for the building. We are planning to use cast aluminum letters that will be on an offset, um, mounting. So we have on the Clark side, we have the, the signage on the building. And then we also have the address on the canopy. And from the parking lot side, we have the name on the canopy. Next, please. This is the lighting for the site. Uh, these bollards we have along the, um, that exit drive from the northern parking area out to West 53rd. Uh, we do have neighbors along that drive, so we wanted to, um, take that into consideration and to not overly light the space, but we also did not want it to be a dark alley there. Um, the middle image is our parking site lighting. We are using LED lights, but they are in a style that will keep the lighting on the site rather than having it bleed out to surrounding properties. And the third image is the, um, building mounted lighting. Next, please. And these are the materials that we're proposing, the brick colors up on the top, the metal panel colors on the bottom and the, um, so we were proposing to use anodized aluminum. At the near West Design Meeting on Wednesday, they did request that we use dark bronze rather than the clear anodized, so we will be, um, making that change. And there were also, um, some comments about looking at, um, particularly, I think the teal color, that third metal panel color maybe was not, you know, looked a little bit too retro. Um, so we are going to be looking at the metal panel colors. And there were also some, um, comments about the brick, so we will be, you know, kind of looking at the composition of our brick. And I think that's our last slide.
Uh, thank you, Sarah. When I open it up to staff, uh, I do want to point out that, uh, this is listed as for schematic approval, but, uh, to the commission members, uh, it's pretty far advanced with materials, so i- if you are open, this could come just back to staff for final. I'm not sure it needs to come back here if you're in agreement with that. So I'll leave it up to you. So any questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I'd like to commend CMSD for acknowledging that this building could be used after hours. Um, as, as a person who attended John Marshall and many other high schools had really large ornate theaters and, and that was intended to be there for the community. So I'm glad they've been able to sort of bifurcate entrances and allow for that activity to happen after hours.
So madam. Madam Chair, um, I, I believe we need to approve the conditional use first, so I will go back, um, to that, uh, item.
Would you like me to read it for you? I have it up or, um, I'll, I'll just read it for the record since they don't, don't have to go all the way back. The conditional use is for permanent parcel number 006-16-013 at 5412 Clark Avenue.
So I move approval on that conditional use. Second.
Motion and a second, can you call the roll?
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, motion.
I'm sorry. I just have a quick question, but go ahead to confirm the motion.
Okay, I was just gonna say motion carries. Uh, go ahead, Erica.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shane, I just had a quick question. Um, so because the school, there was a school already on the property, um, is it because when the school was constructed, this particular zoning, uh, law wasn't in place, which is why we are needing to do the conditional use?
Yes, so the pedestrian retail overlay was not instituted at the time school was originally built. The schools are generally permitted in, uh, two-family residential district, normally with the variants as a piece of that nature. But, um, in this case, because they're demolishing the entire school and rebuilding, the zoning administrator wanted to have them become code compliant by getting the condition of this under the new pedestrian retail overlay.
Thank you.
And for the design review case, it's, um, listed as Northwest 2023-027.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the, um, project with, uh, I believe they addressed all the, um, stipulations and I'll just enumerate them. Add glazing on first level, further articulate Clark Avenue frontage and possibly adjust parapet and spandrel glazing.
And are you okay if they go back to staff for final?
Y- yes, Madam Chair. Um, I, I think they're, they have ample enough information. I think, um, they're further, far enough along to, to warrant administrative approval thereafter.
I'll second.
Oh, we have a motion and circus, Sarah, a second. Sarah, so for you guys, what that means is that you'll still go back to local design review, um, and, and then you'll go to staff to sign off on it. You don't have to come back here unless you cannot come into agreement with both local and staff, then you can always come back here.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, all right, uh, motion and a second, can you call the roll?
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Hurry.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Um, and thank you for the thorough presentation. I think that helped you along, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is Euclid Corridor Design Review. This is 2023-011, The Company Inc., New Construction at 4420 Payne Avenue. Uh, Leon Sempat and anyone else who is here to speak to this, I will swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? Someone here to speak to this one?
Okay.
Okay, um, so just because I'm confused now about the difference between tabling and postponing, um, Michael, should we postpone this or table it?
Madam Chair, since it will be heard again next meeting, you're tabling it temporarily during the meeting, then postpone it back.
All right. Does postponement require a motion?
This require a motion, but does not require a motion.
Got it. I will move to postpone this item for The Company Inc., New Construction at 4420 Payne Avenue.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second, call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Uh, next item is a Euclid Corridor case, 2023-013, proposed demolition of a two and a half story residential structure that's seeking final approval at 11333 Bellflower Avenue. Uh, we have some representatives from case here. Um, I need everybody to, um, swear them, that's gonna speak to be sworn in. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Okay, motion carries. I mean, not motion carries. Let's hear the case.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair and Committee. Uh, my name is Joanne Brown. I work with Case Western Reserve University and I'm going to be the primary presenter today. We also have Dick Jamison, who is our Vice President of Campus Services and Chris Paniki, our university architect with us to answer any additional questions. Uh, I'm actually going to present two, uh, projects. There is a demolition and then there is also the replacement of a parking lot. Uh, it will be presented as two, but we do understand there are two motions. Next slide.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt? I'm sorry. The, uh, expansion of the parking lot is not on the.
Yeah, I didn't see it on the agenda. That's all that's on the agenda is the demolition.
Okay, um, I guess I.
Madam Chair, was tabled at design. Parking lot expansion was tabled at design.
Yes, it, it was tabled at design.
That means that it's to go back to design and review this one more time. That only one.
Okay, um, we can answer questions then if there is concern about what we are going to do after the demolition, so.
I think, um, sorry to you, Joanne. Um, I think you need to present to us. Anytime there is a demolition, we need to see why anyway, so even if we're not acting on it, please make the full presentation.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. All right, next slide. Thank you. Uh, what you're, what we're showing here in the red is the actual, uh, total area of the work. What you see circled in yellow is the actual, uh, structure we're looking to demo. This is the Delta, former Delta Sigma Delta House. This was a fraternity for many years, uh, individually owned. The university was able to require, acquire it in 2022 and we did so. I would like to just note in what you're seeing on the screen that this is located within a campus core. Bellflower Road does have institutional entities on it, the Mandel Center. Directly to the bottom of that yellow oval is our admissions hall. The two parking lots that you see, the one that is more to the left, the smaller of the parking lots across from our, uh, Woolstein Hall is used and was created solely for an admissions parking lot. The other larger parking lot has been on campus. It is actually adjacent to La Abitro Restaurant, if you're familiar with the area. Uh, we do have a need for additional parking due to the admissions and the visitors that are coming to our campus. Next slide, please. This shows some exterior elevations of the house since we have purchased it. We have secured it. It's boarded up, uh, so it is in a secure nature right now. While it is an old home built towards the beginning of, uh, the 20th century, with this, uh, we do not feel there are any, um, architecturally significant details to the building itself. Uh, it is a large building and it also appears that there have been, um, some additions. If you look at the west elevation, that is an exterior, um, passageway and it looks like that, uh, potentially could have been an addition. Next slide. These are just some interior photographs. We have abated the building as well as cleaned it up. Uh, it was a former fraternity house. There was a tremendous amount of, of damage and clutter and dirt, uh, from the use for many years, so that has been removed. It has been abated. Uh, these are just some interior photos. Next slide, please. Okay, what I have included is just, um, some for reference, some master planning slides from 2015. I will note that the university is looking to revisit this master plan within the coming year, but the ideology for this location in this site is the same. So in our previous master plan, the demolition of that house, even though, uh, we might not have owned it at the time, if we could procure it, which was strategic in nature, we would, uh, like to demo it. Next slide. This is just showing some potential uses for that space. Again, as I noted, we are revisiting the master plan, but this is just to reinforce that the university strategically has been looking at this whole, uh, building as well as the two parking lots as a future developable parcel. Next slide. Thank you. Now what I would like to do is, uh, explain and just review what our plans are for the short term for the parking lot expansion. Again, this is the area that we're talking about. We have the two parking lots. Um, this is an existing, um, site plan showing the house right now surrounded by two of the parking lots. What I'd like you to note on this slide is there are currently four curb cuts onto Bellflower Road. Uh, Bellflower is a very busy road for us with the university and we are going to eliminate, uh, some of those curb cuts. Next slide, please. These are just some, uh, general, uh, slides of the adjacent areas, the parking lot, uh, how things look now. Next slide, please. This is our proposed, um, parking lot solution. What we're looking to do is demo the building and put parking in there. Um, currently there are 19 spots in, um, the parking lot for the admissions on the left of the screen. And with this addition, we gain 18, so we're almost doubling the size of that admission parking, which is where we have the significant, significant demand right now. What you'll also see on this slide is, as I mentioned about the curb cuts, we now have two curb cuts. We have to the left of the image, we have, uh, two entries into the, the parking lot and to the right, we have two exits. So again, we've got one passage in, one passage out. What I also would like to note on this slide is that we have, um, worked very hard to maintain, um, pedestrian access through this site, through this parking lot. We do understand that La Abitro, as well as, uh, the diner and Bellflower Court, which is to the north of this image, are all active pedestrian, uh, destinations. And so through the center of this, uh, now enlarged parking lot, we have created a, a very specific pedestrian entrance way. We have also added in, um, parking, um, I'm sorry, uh, pay, uh, landscape areas as well as additional trees. Next slide, please. This is just showing drainage, so at this time we are looking to utilize the existing drainage. We have catch basins and what I'm gonna call the, the restaurant lot. Um, and then we have some permeable pavement that exists in the lot and that is actually shown in the view on this slide, uh, at this time. Uh, I would also like to note that this parking lot is available to the public as well as staff and visitors to the university. Next slide, please. This is now showing, um, some of the, the landscaping. Uh, you can see, we do have some renderings that will also help with this, uh, but we are adding significant landscaping in those, uh, those pockets. We are adding some trees along the, um, the Bellflower side. We are also, and, um, if you can see, you'll see it in the renderings, but long Bellflower and that pedestrian entrance right at where the parking lot begins, we do have a security booth that, uh, we have a security booth on site. We, I believe are relocating, uh, minimally to this location, so there will be security on site. Next slide. This is just photometrics showing that the new lighting. Uh, we are adding lighting in, within those landscape pockets where available. Next slide, please. And now we're starting some rendering, so this is just an aerial view of how we perceive the lot to be. You can see that strong pedestrian, uh, center of it. And in the middle that, uh, at the bottom in the middle, you can see the kind of the gray beige box. Location. Next slide. These are just some renderings of the entrance pathway as well as the exit pathway. This will be gated, it will be ticketed, um, or generally we have, you know, credit card access to be able to use to pay for it there. Next slide. This again is showing that the initial in the upper left-hand corner, the initial entrance for pedestrians walking along Bellflower. And then the lower right-hand slide shows you that very strong connection. And also in that slide, you can see the security booth that I was speaking of earlier. Next slide. These are views looking north and south, actually, you know, laterally across the long distance of the parking lot, just to show you the relationship to the, uh, the properties to the north and the south. Next slide. And this is our final slide and this is just showing that aerial parking lot, uh, vision again. And with that, um, I will open this up for any questions. And I don't know if my colleagues have anything they want to add to the presentation at this time, or just wait for questions. And I don't know if my colleagues have anything they want to add to the presentation at this time, or just wait for questions. Feel free.
I would just, gives us an opportunity to better utilize that space and enhance the appearance and functionality of that core section of the campus. That's a major part of the intended, intention of this project.
Before we open it up to commission members, I'm going to ask staff to articulate to the commission members a couple of things. One, there have been some letters that have been received to just would like those to be inserted into the record by the Assistant Director. And then also, if you could articulate from the design review case, since it seems like there were two cases yesterday, if you could tell us a little bit about the design review from the staff person's perspective.
Good morning, commission members. This is Kim Scott, and the, the- I'm sorry. The outstanding concerns were related to the demolition of the existing, existing structure as well as whether or not the number of parking spaces that would be added for the temporary length of time. I mean, the one thing that was shown was that this was going to be a future development area. So with the number of additional parking spaces added for the site, whether that really- Whether it, I'm sorry. Whether it merited the demolition of the, the existing structure. And I think that that was the, the greatest, the greatest comment for, for those who had commented on the demolition of the house that's there.
Would you elaborate a little bit on that? On that concern that wouldn't be a parking lot for long, but then a development site, so why remove the house now? Is that the point, or?
So the immediate need the university has is additional parking adjacent to the administration, or the admissions area. We've been increasing our student load by 100 students every year, so we're getting double, if not triple, the amount of admissions folks coming to campus to see the campus as well as visitors to the campus. So the, the initial need for the parking there is, is for the admissions office. We do also have the restaurant that is used in off-hours. Regarding the future use, as I mentioned, we are going to be looking at our master plan. So we do not have an immediate or strategic need immediately for that house, but the space and the lots, the three lots in the future are very desirable for future development. Whether that is residential in nature, whether it is institutional in nature, that is one of the reasons we're revisiting our master plan. We've succeeded in some of the items from the master plan that were identified. This was not one of the areas that we did anything with.
If I could add, as Joanne indicated, we essentially doubled the number of spaces we have allocated to our undergraduate admissions function, but we also improved the efficiency and flow in the parking lot through the redesign and the access mechanisms. So it enhances the entire operation as well as improving the landscape and so forth.
Question, what was the actual vote on the two matters at design review? Can someone tell me what the actions were? Marka, can you?
I think Tim would have that.
Is it written, I guess, to my commission members, sort of what the actual votes were yesterday on both matters?
The vote was, the motion was to disapprove, and it was unanimous, unanimously voted in that direction.
I see here there was one abstention, Madam Chair.
The abstention was from the, the member that was representing the project.
Thank you.
So if I can add a couple of things too, as far as this house goes, in the future, having this house in place would prohibit us from, as Joanne indicated, some of the future uses of it. It really would constrain what we're planning to do in the future. You know, that's going to be coming in the next maybe couple of years. We'll have some strategies on what we might do there, whether it's residential or institutional. But to have this, this building in the way of that really limits our use in, of the university, so we're planning there. I, I think that was, I did not, I apologize, I couldn't attend that meeting yesterday. I had some health issues in the family, but my understanding was that it was because they weren't certain about the use, and we definitely have, in the future, have plans for that, that space, so.
Yeah, there, there were also some comments, I think, about keeping the house and keeping a residential feel within the area. And while we do respect that we have residents very close on the adjacent street, on Hessler, this is, we consider this more of a core element since we do have university institutional buildings on both sides, and we're not directly adjacent to those.
Madam Chair, I have a question for the applicant. So based upon the timeline of the construction of the parking lot, I know, Joanne, you mentioned that case plans do update the master plan. Give a sense of just, from a chronology standpoint, like when is the anticipated completion of the parking lot, and how does that relate to when the master plan process would take place?
So I'll answer some of that and then let Chris also chime in. So regarding the parking lot, it would be the university's intent to get this going as soon as possible so that as we bring new students on, we can start to utilize it because we have that immediate need. So we'd like to put the parking lot up, do this work yet this summer or begin this summer.
Right, and as far as the master plan goes, we want to engage, starting this fall, with a firm to help us refresh the 2015 master plan, and that'll, process will take about a little over a year. And then we would come back and share that with planning or intent.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, to the applicant, I need to ask a question before I make these comments to the applicant. How many students attend case?
12,006, 6,000, almost 6,000 undergrads. We've increased enrollment, as, as Joanne mentioned.
I, I get it. Okay. I'm not an expert on campus planning, university campus planning, but I have visited a lot of campuses in a, in my time, and you know, what I, you know, I'll just select Syracuse as an example because that's where my son attends. We park our car and we walk, and most people do on, on campuses. I truly believe that we really need to look at the, the plan, look at parking, look at district parking, talk to UCI, and figure out from, from a more strategic standpoint, what this all means. Just to, just to gain a few parking spaces, tear down such a, you know, in my opinion, a significant structure. We, we in Cleveland don't value history. We're losing a lot of it. So that's just my, that's my comment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to build on the vice chair's comments, I, I had a similar thought just around, you know, it's been quite some time since I've been on the campus, but, you know, shuttle services and things of that nature. But I think part of why I was asking the question about the master plan is having some forecasting to what the needs are going to be on campus without just responding to what an immediate need may be for 18, 18 spaces, right? So if you're, if you have seen a tremendous growth in admissions, then the admission building may need to move, right? And there may be, may, may need to be another place where it could be more accommodating to the volume coming in. And I know that's not obviously going to be addressed until you all refresh the, the master plan. But I agree that, you know, I recall there being shuttles on campus that, when I was visiting schools way back when, you know, would bring you from a common lot, you know, over to where, you know, activities would take place when you were visiting an institution. So to me, it just seems like the focus on the, on the master plan would allow there to be a more concrete and comprehensive understanding of usage of this particular lot.
Is that a motion?
Comment. Madam Chair, I'm going to move to disapprove.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and so we will vote on this.
And I'm just, for a reason, I do believe in conjunction with my colleagues that there needs to be more study on the future master plan.
Okay.
Before we put up a parking lot.
Yeah. So a question to my commission members, although we will vote on this, is that if we're, if we're saying that our preference would be before taking action is to see the vision, if you will, or the master plan, then I wonder, and we're going to still vote on this because there's a motion and a second, if tabling it would actually be a better motion than disapproving it, because of what we are saying is that we want the university to go back and do some work to share what the plans are for Bellflower and for the surrounding kind of master plan from a use, and also from a, I think what's really important here in addition to the uses are the kind of charming nature of Bellflower and how even buildings might be sited here to, if, because it is a really charming street that has a kind of look and feel that requires also some sophisticated thinking about what, even if the master plan is to put something else there, what would go there that doesn't, you know, that keeps that feel because it is special. So we will still vote on this, and, but I think that, I think in disapproving it, I think Diane, your comments are important in that Erica's, should, those statements should be noted that we're asking the university in a condition on this to, to go do the work of the master plan first. Is that correct?
It is, and the reason I am moving for disapproval now is that that process, by their testimony, will not begin until this fall at the earliest. And so I just feel we need to take a decisive move on, or motion on, on this request right now, and then there will be a presentation to us in a year or two on a new master plan for the university.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any other comments or questions before we vote?
I would just, I'm sorry.
There's no more public comment once the motion has been taken. So, Michael, can you call the roll?
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
No, as, as I said, mine is more procedural. I would have preferred to have tabled this, but, but still motion carries. So, thank you. I think that the recommendation here, though, is clear, is to come back to us with some more planning and to do this all together. Okay, next item, we're done with design review cases. We're on to mandatory referrals. And the mandatory referral is ordinance number 704-2023. This is to amend various sections of chapter 513 relating to patios and parklets. We do need some explanation here, so is there a staff person who's going to, going to explain this one?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. I've been having technical difficulties the last couple of times on my, going on to the things. Yeah, this is Robert Knopf, Section Chief for Permits and Sidewalks in MoCap. Here to go and explain, yeah, I'll have to present this to you. So I appreciate the, the time for me to go and do this. It's fairly important that we go through and try to move forward with these ordinance revisions as the administration and many of our local businesses are questioning this. I just go and, I, I know I submitted a presentation to Mike before, okay, there we go. So here's, so a quick overview of the agenda, just give a brief history of the patios and parklets. Review changes to section 513, which is the actual existing patio ordinance, and then also review some of the changes to 505.07, and you'll understand that as we go through. So brief history, we currently have the, the tourist permit, which is temporary occupancy of outdoor restaurants, initialized back in 2001. Apparently only sidewalks are allowed to be utilized for this, have over about 60 applications per year, and it's inspected annually as part of the renewal. The temporary expansion area, the T permits, which was established in early 2021 in response to COVID. The temporary program included parklets, it's outdoor restaurants and, or restaurant seating only, ended in November 1st of 2022. And like I said, various businesses have been requesting parklets. We were requested by the administration to have a permanent program to be established spring of 2023. So we're a little bit late on that, but hopefully we have it now in front of you. And one of the other thing, comments from the administration is that we wanted to try to reduce Jersey barriers being utilized as the picture, the picture that was shown on that previous slide showed on West 25th Street how the Jersey barriers were there. So section 513 pretty much goes over the, the new section is going to be called troops temporary right-of-way occupancy of outdoor patios and parklets. And what this does is combine the temporary expansion area into the tours, the temporary outdoor patio. It'll be utilized by businesses for patios and/or parklets. It'll be a one-year permit so that it will not have to be removed every year, and the spaces will be used for food, beverage, consumption, public, general public seating, and/or bicycle corrals. The public outdoor parklets, which is part of the section 513 also, can be utilized by CDCs. CDCs have some more resources than a lot of the local businesses, so a larger area can be made into a parklet if, if requested or needed. Also gives a little bit more consistent curb line, which adds to the safety with the areas. And part of the troops permit is that the CD, is that the businesses let CDCs know if they have been approved for a parklet. And there've, there are some pre-approved parklet designs via the neighborhood, Cleveland Neighborhood Progress on that they've gone, but essentially we'll be reviewing these as they come in. And we're trying to maintain public accessibility as much as possible. The, part of this is we're going to change the name of the section to the issuance of temporary public right-of-way occupancy permits for outdoor patios and parklets. The patios and parkits are going to be used for more than just restaurants. We've been getting a lot of, for other items to do that. Like I said, also just for casual seating, not necessarily just for restaurants. And the park, like I said before- And the park, like I said before, the parks could be utilized for casual seating, dining and drinking, and also bike corrals. Um, big part of the definitions, um, the changing on, uh, five thirteen. One, just define what the CDC is, um, and that's based off of, um, legal essentially went and gave us what that definition was based on how we utilize it within the city of Cleveland. Um, also going and doing the outdoor patio, uh, removing any, uh, reference to actual just restaurants, also going removing things from courts and alleys. Um, because we're not going to be allowing anything on a quarter alley because there's just no space. Um, and that it's also could be used for business, for its current business operations. And then what a parklet is, you know, a parklet is an area within existing curb line on a street where parking is permitted that may be used by businesses established for its current business operations, bicycle parking and or purpose deemed appropriate by the, uh, uh, director, um, or by CDC. Or by, or by a CDC for food or beverage consumption, bicycle parking and or other deemed, other purposes deemed by, appropriate by the director. Biggest change to five thirteen is the allowance of parklets to be utilized. Where only before is just the patios and on sidewalks. Another major change that CDCs will be allowed to sponsor the parklets, where previously they were not allowed to do anything. And, um, the outdoor patios and parklets will not just be for restaurants, but any business may have one if they desire. Um, five thirteen point oh two, um, some of the major changes in this section is that parklets won't be allowed on streets, not courts or alleys anymore. Um, encroachment permits will not be required for parklets. And, um, will need to, a permit to occupy and utilize a patio or parklet, just making sure that they know you have to have that permit. Another thing, another change, the change is for five thirteen point oh three. Uh, for a parklet, we can request the information needed to determine if the protective barrier is adequate. There's many different types of pre-built parklets. It was decided to have the businesses submit what they are looking to do and have various staff review to approve. Um, the application needs a signed statement that the applicant is an officer of the business or CDC. Um, and the parklet can be extended beyond the frontage of the business if they receive a signed statement of approval from the adjacent property owner. They'll also require a ten thousand dollar bond in order to remove the patio or parklet items that the business ends up going out of business. Um, so that we can have money to go and remove it. Um, the fees. Um, fees will be now established by border control. Um, this makes it easier to adjust fees every three to five years or as needed. Uh, we removed the ninety day window where applicants receive refund on fees. Typically, we're able to get that done before, um, earlier than that, but sometimes there's issues um, where we just need additional information or because safety, who also reviews these, has some issues that they have to work out, um, with the particular, um, business. Permit now is a strict twelve-month permit. Previous April first to March thirty first. Now, you know, someone comes on July first to go and submit a permit, that permit would be good from July first to July first of the following year. And one of the reasons why we're trying to have the parklets during the T area era, the parklets had to be moved from November first to March first. Um, one of the things we end up seeing is that businesses are more likely to utilize the parklets and spend money on pre-built parklets if they know that they don't have to remove them and try to store them for four months. Um, if the permit sells or leases businesses, new business owners have sixty days to submit an amended application. Um, five one three point oh five permitted locations, uh, changed the term from outdoor restaurant to outdoor patio. Parklets can't be within fifty foot of intersection, and the parklets must have a protective barrier. Um, requirements in five one three oh seven, requirements, conditions of permits. Parklet must have a signage stating hours of operation if it's public or private use and permit's business name. Uh, when a business permits a parklet, they must inform the CDC. So the CDC, um, has the opportunity to create additional parklets if needed. Um, to have a more continuous curb line and also seating for patios and parklets must be accounted for in determining restroom capacity, which that was never part of previously. Um, five one three oh eight, suspension, uh, revocation. Um, appeals go before the board of sidewalk appeals first and then border zoning appeals. Um, the ordinance five oh five point oh seven needs to be changed to allow this, and Director of Capital Projects, um, can go revoke permit if the permit suspends operations permanently. Five one three oh nine, um, just removal of equipment. Um, the changes to this, the city may seize or remove outdoor patio parklet items in case of emergency. Um, may Caesar, um, outdoor, um, the items, given a thirty-day notice for any public or private utility work. And then upon termination of, uh, revocation of the permit, all patio parklet items must be removed within sixty days. In case the city need to remove the equipment, the city may enforce a, a impound fee. None of this was in there previously, so we didn't really have a, a method of removing things. Um, five one three point nine nine penalties, um, penalties now is a hundred dollars per day may be enforced by, um, the administrative manager of engineering construction for non-compliance of five one three. And civil penalties does not limit any criminal offense or the ability to suspend or revoke the permit. Next slide, then five oh five point oh seven, this is just the, um, the sidewalk code for the board of sidewalk appeals. Essentially just goes, allows us now to have the sidewalk appeals to also hear um, these cases. Um, so which, you know, we just need legal one that, uh, be put in there. So we could go and have them care. We're trying to go and take the load off of Boza. We know Boza has a lot of things in from, uh, talking with Director Juan, she thought she was on board with, uh, doing that because she knows how busy they are. Uh, next slide, please. Questions?
Yeah, yeah, Madam Chair, do have a question, and it's about the definition of a bicycle. Um, and I don't know what that definition is, but could that include um, combustion-type Vespa scooters, um, or motorcycles? The reason why I say that is because to, if you come downtown to park one of those vehicles, you have to take entire parking space. Right? I've been in other cities where they've taken maybe a parking space or two and they've striped it off so that, uh, those type of, um, vehicles can be parked. Considering the fact, especially downtown, we're going to, um, a meterless, um, parking scenario. You can still register your, your vehicle as a parked vehicle. Just a thought. I think we might have an opportunity to address that as well, unless this is outside that purview. Thank you.
If I can address that, um, uh, to the, uh, chair. Um, that, that's something we can now end up putting in the rules and regulations, uh, for, for the, uh, five thirteen. Um, we can end up, uh, putting in there a, a definition of what items are available to be put into the bicycle corrals. Um, that's something that we're working with, you know, a lot of different, um, departments within the city that are trying to open up with the shared mobility. Um, so that there's, you know, bicycle park, you know, bicycle parking. Um, and we had to, I'll have to talk with them about a good definition of, of what a bicycle is now that we have a lot of these e-bikes. You know, which the e-bikes are essentially, you know, very much like the old mopeds, um, from before, um, from when I was a kid. Um, but we can end up, we can try to address that within the rules and regulations to make sure that that's included and defined. You know, within that.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Madam Chair, um, just a quick question, uh, to Robert. Um, in section five thirteen oh five, um, you note, uh, parklets must have a protective barrier. Um, at the top of your presentation, you had shown us a picture of what you don't want to see with the Jersey barriers. Um, so just curious if, if it's needed one to have any more specificity about what type of protective barriers, and if you can share what other examples of protective barriers would be aside from Jersey barriers, please?
Uh, yeah, we're, um, if I can, um, answer that question to the chair, um, the, what we, what we've found is that there's a lot of different items out there that have been approved from different ci, uh, different cities that already have, um, parklets available to them. Um, so what we'll end up doing is part of the, uh, review process, we'll end up having members of, uh, Bureau of Traffic, um, and Public Works, uh, we'll end up also going and reviewing any items that we receive um, to make, to go and decide whether or not this is something that we wish to have or not wish to have. Um, that's why we're trying to keep it op, as open as possible. Just because since this is becoming more and more prevalent along, you know, with a lot more major cities, is that there's a lot more companies out there who are building pre-built, um, parklet areas, um, where the, essentially it's, it's, it's like a modal, um, item where they just come in and, you know, just be something that is placed right there. So I can, I can end up trying to find some, some other examples. Um, I've seen of, a few of them that, that, uh, Cleveland Neighborhoods um, has given us that they've ended up looking at. And some of the ones that they showed us, um, you know, we felt were, were good. Um, some of them weren't, um, that we didn't really care for. So, um, like I said, that's, we're trying to keep it as open as possible so that, you know, when people end up submitting that we can, you know, reviewing each one as need be. And then, uh, what we're planning on doing is at some point, once we get through probably like the first year of this, um, if, if and when this gets approved, um, that we'll end up having kind of like a list of, um, you know, who we, you know, what's, which items are going to be more approved and not approved. Um, based on what gets submitted and what we end up looking at. Does that answer your question more?
It does. Thank you so much. And yeah, I was in DC a few weeks ago and I love it. Um, I just think it just brings so much energy to the street and to the community. So I think it's also an opportunity for, you know, to the extent possible, community input as well. I know you're, um, working with Cleveland Neighborhood Progress and, and the CDCs, um, just getting that community voice in, I think would be really great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of ordinance number seven oh four dash twenty twenty three uh, to amend certain sections of the code relating to patios and parklets.
Uh, second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes. Motion carries. I want to thank you really for the great work. Um, uh, so, uh, Robert, this is great and appreciate the um, movement forward and something that's great for the city to continue to evolve. So thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, and I appreciate your help.
Sure. Uh, administrative approvals, if you could go through them slowly, we'll do these together, but, um, they'll be on your screen if you could scroll through the administrative approvals.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the administrative approvals.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes. Uh, motion carries. Um, so Shannon, I'm going to do something a little different, um, just because I know that we're not taking any action. This is just an update on the Form-based Code. Um, we do have to approve some new members, um, to the design review. So I prefer to do those action items first. Um, in case anybody is here, um, for this. Um, so let's go through these. Um, and I have a question to, um, uh, I think to the team, to Marka or to Michael, do we need to do these individually or can we do them all together?
Madam Chair, I do have them listed out as potential.
Wait, say that again?
Yeah, I was thinking individual.
Individual. Okay. So we have copies of the resumes, uh, and, um, so the first one is to add, uh, Chris Sheftin to the East Design Review in this nomination.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Um, can I call the roll?
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Stephanie Strawbridge to the East Design Review Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes. Uh, motion carries. I will say for the future, um, it might be helpful to, for staff when we do these to just have a couple of bullets maybe on the slides for the audience and for the public and for us. Next time that might have, um, potentially like a few bullets of where they work and their background and maybe a picture. Um, I know it's all in our packets, but just for the public, um, I think it'd be helpful. But let's go on to Dawn Mays, who's at East Design Review Nomination.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of Dawn Mays for East, East Design Review.
Second.
I'll call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes. Motion carries. Anthony Winfield, engineer for Euclid Corridor.
See, I, I move to approve Mr. Anthony Wood, Woodfield to the Euclid Corridor Design Review Committee.
And I'll second.
Motion and second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes. Motion carries. Euclid Corridor, David Wilson.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval for David Wilson to Euclid Corridor, uh, Design Review.
Second.
Motion and second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes. Motion carries. I think this is the last one.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Julian Khan to the Euclid Corridor Design Review Committee.
And I'll second.
Motion and second. Call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you to the staff for adding these members, great new members to the design review committees. Um, so appreciate that and, uh, really nice to see such a great group of people being added. Um, so this is the last item. Um, this is, uh, really just for information only. Um, and this is an update that Shannon's going to give us on the Form-Based Code and probably the Form-Based Workshop. So the staff, those commission members that showed up, uh, can chime in too about how I, I was not able to make it uh, for the, the Form-Based Code, um, working session, but would love to hear about all of it. So Shannon, go ahead.
Good morning, um, Madam Chair. Shannon Leonard, Chief Sitting Planner. Uh, so I'm going to kind of walk through, um, we were asked to share not only about the charrette, maybe over a course of a couple um, meetings, but really get you guys back, uh, in the loop about the Form-Based Code project and notifying that, like, the public is watching this. And so really, you know, stepping back and kind of educating how we got here. Um, and so just to kind of go back to nineteen twenty nine, and I know some of you have seen this, so I'm sorry to be ad nauseam in some, in some instances. Uh, but nineteen twenty nine, you're sitting forty one, uh, was, was very prosperous and moving forward. There was a lot of industry uh, and residents. There was almost nine hundred thousand residents at the time. And so when zoning came about, when our first zoning code was initiated in nineteen twenty nine, there was, um, a really rationale to, you know, for the last hundred and thirty-three years, the city was being built, you could pretty much build wherever you want, however you wanted, as long as you owned the property. And so they had the problem of, you know, industry being next to residential, and schools and things of that nature. And then as well as the rationale for the zoning code was, you know, we didn't want these mixed uses because of overcrowding uh, and the nauseous uses mixed in with residential. Um, and then throughout time, they started noticing that in nineteen forty one, as zoning code, uh, moved on, that, um, you know, the city was again still adding to the mixing of uses. Um, and so just some, a few historical documents here noting that, you know, back in nineteen forty, they wanted shopping centers better than having, you know, small retail corner stores within our residential neighborhoods. Um, and so there was a real push to separate, uh, by uses through the zoning code. And so just a brief history of zoning in Cleveland and Cairo County in nineteen thirteen, uh, the first Cleveland City Planning Commission was established. East Cleveland was actually the first, uh, locality here, uh, that had East Cleveland was actually the first locality here that had the first zoning ordinance in 1919. And then in 1920, the State of Ohio actually passed a state enabling legislation after the US of Congress adopted similar requirements which allowed zoning. And then Supreme Court in 1926, in our suburbs of Euclid, actually legalized and upheld zoning by separation of land uses in this famous Euclid versus Ambler realty case. And then 1929, three years later, the city of Cleveland adopted its first zoning ordinance. And so that case really established the constitutionality of zoning. The city had established a zoning for a 68 acre site owned by Ambler to prevent noxious uses and predominantly small bedroom community. Ambler sued claiming that the city had unconstitutionally taken their property rights from them, but the court sided with the city's claim that zoning was justified and constitutional under the concept of police power. So police power is basically the capacity of states or cities and home states like Ohio to regulate behavior and force order within their territory, so long as they're protecting the health, safety, welfare, morals of their residents. And so it also included that zoning should be tied to a general plan. So basically that general plan or comprehensive plan gives way to the ordinances, should zoning for any type of particular property be challenged? And so the current Cleveland general plan overall right now is the Cleveland Connecting Cleveland 2020 Citywide Plan, as well as the current land use map, as well as neighborhood, more we said neighborhood plans. So what exactly is conventional, also Euclidian zoning, which is what our zoning code is predominant of today? It's really a way to organize zoning and land use regulations, so taking those neighborhood plans and having, regulating by law what you can do with each piece of property in the city of Cleveland. And so that's broken up generally into three categories of residential, commercial, and industrial uses. And then there's also other types of regulations, including, you know, density of said uses, can you have low density housing or multifamily apartments? Can you, what is the height of those buildings? The original zoning ordinance, as in Buick and otherwise, were really regulations on height and making sure that you had enough sunlight and air to have, you know, live prosperably. And then the amount of space the structures can occupy, the location of the buildings on a lot, so what are your setbacks, and the proportion and types of space in a lot? So how much parking, how much landscaping, other site conditions like that. So the zoning code in Cleveland has basically 22 zoning districts. It's somewhat hierarchical, mostly what is happening in the more restricted districts can happen in the less restrictive districts, give or take. But generally speaking, if you're, if you're local retail or neighborhood retail, you really can't happen in residential districts without a variance. And so we also regulate height and area districts. Height districts range from anywhere between 1 and 9, which is 35 feet to 900 feet. And then area represents the space a building can occupy in particular a lot. So how much gross floor area can you have, minimum lot size, seems of that nature. And then we also have these overlay districts, which really, this is a tool that creates a special zoning district that's placed over the existing base zone, and that identifies special provisions in addition to some of those underlying base districts. This adds flexibility, adaptability, and design standards to traditional zoning districts, and enables the city to main existing zoning while addressing special needs in certain areas. And so the overlay districts in the city of Cleveland are kind of like patchwork of trying to get back to the original land use, how land was originally developed. So with the pedestrian retail overlay, the urban form overlay, and the urban core overlay. And so what is the pedestrian retail overlay? That's established for mostly maintaining the economic viability of our historic shopping districts, and they're mapped mostly under, over local retail and general retail. And then the urban overlay and the urban, urban form, urban core are more form-based, and that's really our first dabble into form-based zoning that we're going to get into here soon. And that's really to establish a faster, high level of walkability and design quality for Cleveland streets. And this will do so by requiring pedestrian-oriented building features, preserving the historical and architectural character of new and existing buildings, and protecting public safety by minimizing conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians. And so what have the outcomes been from conventional Euclidian zoning? Really a separation of uses and users. Zoning is not the end-all-be-all, but with other policies in place from the federal government and the local government, it led to things like redlining and then separation of people as it relates to race and income. And so under our current code, it's really easy to build auto-centric type form, like you see on Clark. Ohio City was built before the 1929, which was the initiation of zoning code, where it was separated by land use. And so it's really difficult to build that today. In fact, any type of infill development generally requires some, some amount of variances. The other difference between the two is that our current code really is a one-size-fits-all regardless of context. For example, in Camps Corner is this zone, local retail. Then you have Buckeye also zone local retail. You can see the difference in the forms that were built there. Really, there's setback minimums, but there's no maximums, so there's no predictability. There could be one or the other. And then it's also very much dependent on the design review to advocate good form, and that can be discretionary or it can slow down the development process. This is another example of Detroit Shoreway, what that looks like under local retail, and we also have Ohio City also zone local retail. And I'd be remiss if we didn't talk a little bit about the auto industry in Cleveland and off-street parking. So in 1903, 476 people in Kiowa County owned an auto, but then by 1963, 632 people in Kiowa County owned automobiles, and there were 59 vehicle assembly and equipment operations were active within the city of Cleveland proper. So there were a lot of car making happening. Also in 1949, you had 56 and a half miles of freeway, and then in 1975, you also have 41,000 miles of federal four-lane highway built. And so then by 1968, with all the people and all the cars, off-street parking regulations were added to the zoning code because of car ownership and the lack of parking necessitated that amendment. So a lot of businesses were going, thought they were going out of businesses, and in addition, they were trying to prevent the outmigration to the suburbs here in the city of Cleveland. And so this often, the current code requires more parking than allowable floor area for the building in some places. And then obviously you had sprawl. So single-use zoning plus highway construction, auto growth, and city policies often led to urban sprawl, which is what you saw the decrease in population across the city. So this is some of the results of single-use zoning, and this is what the results could be under form-based zoning. And so why do we need form-based code? So why does the zoning code matter? It's because it really determines the form of the city for good or for bad. So our common goal would be that a city that is walkable, sustainable, healthy, equitable, and vibrant. And so this is really just showing you what the DNA of a walkable street, where people flock to, why they feel comfortable walking, and why it's, it's got a mix of uses, lots of things going on, lots of action, just another example. And then, you know, the walkable street here, this is a painting, but this is what people really look for when they're looking for neighborhoods to live in, that they can have accessibility to not just jobs and residents, but opportunities as well. And so what is the spectrum of built form? You have a mix from auto-centric on one end to walkable on the other. So these are just examples of what that looks like, contemporary suburban, mid-century strip centers, design that is going more and more towards walkable. And so this is just giving an example of, you know, how to move into taking a traditional street and moving into a more walkable. So typical retail under normal conditions, the streetscape improvements, focus on lighting trees, arms across work, building up instead of out, and mix of uses. And so when we talk about Euclidian and form-based code, how are we going to achieve the form-based code and transfer from Euclidian to form-based, really focus on requirements that create safe, walkable mixed-use neighborhoods and simplify the code format? So basically incorporating the most design review comments from planning commission and our local committees and codifying that into regulations. And so what is the major difference between the two codes? Euclidian focused mostly, it organizes zoning and zoning regulations around use, that's the predominant organizing factor. There's some management, and there's less focus on form and design and how that fits within the existing context. Whereas form-based code is still regulating use, it's just not the predominating organized factor, it's around form and design. And it allows for mixing of uses. So it allows for car-like, free alternative, more equitable options in housing and transportation. So our current zoning code, if you look at it in images, it separates uses, it requires a lot of driving, it separates people from jobs, from their daily needs. Whereas a form-based code goes back to the original land regulation or lack thereof, where we, we designed our cities around what we could get to by foot or other alternative modes of transportation outside of vehicles. And so when you talk about what is a good walk around the city, these are just some examples of a mix, you have a mix of uses, there's a lot of vibrancy going on, people are out, it's safer. And then this is an example of how a walk could not be safe, if we're lining our streets with parking garages or other blank walls. And so the last major difference is the Euclidian where it's form-based code is how it's written. And so while the Euclidian code, while I can verbatim tell you about the front yard regulations in our zoning code, a lot of people cannot, versus in the new code, it's much more, much more graphic, and it's much more understandable in today's language that we're accustomed to. And so how did we get to this new form-based code? This has been a long time coming, right? So we've been introduced to the principles and concepts of form-based codes as an easy-to-read format, it clearly defines expectations for new development, and it reduces time from application to permit. We added urban form overlay, so we've added patchwork amendments to the text of the zoning code to get to the form we want and map them in places that the city wanted to see these more walkable, form-based areas, and introduced that legislation in 2015. There was also the ULI Best Practices in Zoning Symposium in 2015 that really got us going on this trajectory. We added urban core overlay in downtown districts in 2016 by getting rid of area requirements and things of that nature and setbacks for residential. And then in 2018, we also updated the townhouse code, as you know, we are also further updating the townhouse code. We introduced the central business district code and modified the area and height districts there. And then we really started working with a consultant in 2018. We started doing our first charrettes with the consultant in 2019, and then it's over the course of the pandemic, continued that, and then there's also been transit working development, which was in our original 2020 Connecting Cleveland Plan. It's been introduced also with transit demand management strategies and residencies as of 2022, 2023. And so where are we with this project, since we started so long ago? There's been a formal law review, there was a public release of it on May 29th. We also held the charrette with AIA, ULI, and APA last Friday and with our staff. We also met internally with all of the integrated development staff the day prior, as well as the council folks. There has been an administration change, council change during the course of this project, so going back out to the community with the new maps and this project is really important. And what we'll be doing over the course of this summer before we come back to you all. The public feedback with the draft on the website closes on July 12th, and then we are anticipating coming back here for a vote in August, but we need to really take back the feedback and kind of tweak some things from the charrette as well as the public feedback that is probably oncoming. But we're hoping that we will have an adoption of at least the text in 2020 in the fall of this year. And so just, I'm going to quickly go through this, the charrette that we had last Friday. We do want to thank all of our partners, AIA, APA, ULI, and our consultant code studio, as well as all of the staff at City Planning and across the city that participated. And then of course, Magnet hosted us. And so what happened at this charrette was really over 70-plus people registered and attended from all over the city of Cleveland, Akron, and Canton. We had planners, architects, developers, lawyers, and so we allowed people to come in, tour Magnet. Magnet is a really fascinating facility, and allowed people to have tours, there was lunch, gave a presentation, and then we broke out in groups, because we had so many participants, there was about seven groups. We gave them seven sites within the code, so two within, two or three within each district to kind of look at the code and review it and see what they could come up with and get some of the pros and cons of this new code, and really see if it meets the goals that I'm going to break out to you here soon. And then there was a group discussion. So this is just some quick pictures, I have more in the coming weeks to talk about more of the results and what we found out from this charrette, but this is just a quick preview of all that was going on here. And so I'll have some feedback to incorporate in the coming weeks. So what are the goals of the land code, and why did we have this charrette? We really want to just produce a better outcome. So the form-based code will produce, will better reflect the resident's vision for change. So really going out to the communities on the front end saying, hey, what do you want here? What, what do you envision your community to be? Take those neighborhood plans and those visions and codify those, as well as with the form of the existing context. And then basically codifying that into a form-based code. We also want to deliver a simple, easy, and weekly code. So getting a permit in Cleveland can take longer than in some of our peer cities. Many instances, the zoning code is out of sync with modern development typologies, resulting in denied permits and trips to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then it'll also seek to reduce the time our project spends in zoning review by codifying neighborhood plans and allowing building types prescribed in the plan by grade. And then we also want to reduce approval time. So the current zoning code was first adopted, obviously, early in 1929, and it takes, many people believe it takes a very long time to get through with our conversant zoning code with a patchwork of amendments. And then a new form-based code that's clear, concise, and rational and organized will give residents, developers, and other stakeholders greater clarity. So does it pass that Sunday morning test, if you will? Can, can an average citizen or new developer, new architect sit down and say, you know, this is what I need to do to build X, Y, Z? Do I have everything I need and can I get through the process pretty efficient? And so the new form-based code is also highly visible with modern vocabulary. So why did we pick the three geographies? So we picked Detroit Shoreway, two areas in Opportunity Corridor and Puff. One, we had a limited budget, and two, because we wanted to pick areas adjacent to other large investments. So Battery Park, Detroit Shoreway is a pretty much well-developed neighborhood with some infill opportunities, but it's also within the West 80s. And so we really wanted to pick an area that was already developed, that was seeing investment and was seeing development come through, so that we could see how this code's operating once it is adopted. Opportunity Corridor and the New Economy Zone, that's directly across the street from where the new Cedar Myers Fairfax development went in. And then in the job poor zone, where we're seeing, you know, development of some of the food distribution hubs and things of that nature, and obviously that area is open for development, and how did this code play out there? And then we also used Puff, which was a pretty developed community, but also had a lot of room for development and investments to spur new investment nearby. And then we also wanted to pick in these areas that had diverse building typologies and uses. So obviously, single-family and residential streets is much different tools than mixed-use buildings or industrial buildings, and we wanted to get, you know, the best bang for our buck. So what is a form-based code and how is it laid out? It's just a regulatory tool of land use. And so it's a way to translate those ideals of the community and codify them. And how do we codify those? So you really focus on how does the private realm interact with the public realm with more focus on the public? So building facades and public room, the form of massive buildings, and the scale and types of streets and blocks. So that's done by height. You could have two and a half to three stories, but that makes for an interesting wall. Or the form, what kind of glazing transparency? Do we have eyes on the street? How does that building or structure sit on the street within the public realm and how do they interact? And then it still regulates for use, because we still don't want not just the uses next to each other. And so some of the components within the code is obviously you have those place-specific maps, those character maps, you have an illustration of the zoning districts, you have public space standards, building form standards, and there's an administration section. And so what does that kind of look like? If we had some of the maps here, it really is just graphical, shows you, okay, this is the House Four district, H represents the district, Four represents how many units in this district. And then within every section of each zoning district, you're going to see some images as well as an intent statement and kind of like a summary of like what's going on in this district. One of the really neat things in terms of administration from an administrative standpoint is, as well as from the is, as well as from the citizen's standpoint, is that if you want to do new construction, you'll know with this chart here on the left that you'll need to include every one of these things in your site plan or plan. If you're just doing a change of use, maybe you don't need all of that information. And so not only would the citizen know that, but also the administrator, when they're reviewing, they can make sure they have everything they need to have a complete application, which makes the process more efficient. The district examples, things are set up by site and building. So the site is really where are those site standards? And a site can be a combination of lots or just one lot, which is a big change for more current code and how we regulate it. And then there's also the building standards. So the massing, windows, story height, things of that nature. And then within each of those sections, you'll notice on the right-hand columns under House Fours, it gives out a few sections. And so that leads to the rules of interpretations, which is really the meats and potatoes of what everything means in this code. And that's a big difference from what you see today where just everything is listed within. These give you a snapshot of the regulations. And then if you need more explanation of what does that exactly mean, you would go to the rules of interpretation, which is in chapter two of this code. And then the use standards and guidelines, this is really interesting here. The uses, each section has a summary of uses. It still goes over uses. But what's really great about this is that it breaks down every use that could be imaginable in these districts all in the one chart and then subdivides them into bigger categories. So this is much more efficient in terms of, you know, everyday people these days, it's easier to repeat more than anything. And then there's also accessory uses. It talks about in our house-scale, enabled at scale districts. The other section is development standards. So we still regulate access. How do you get in and out of a lot? Parking, bicycle parking, landscaping, screening, pincing, lighting, and plants, landscaping. And so the biggest change, I think, in this code is the administration of this code. The administrator of this code makes the city planning director or his or her designated name become the zoning administrator of the code. We've walked us through building and housing and they're really pushing for this as they... There's been many talks about, you know, making, moving city planning or zoning into city planning as a whole and how that'll look in the future. It's not uncommon. Many jurisdictions make, put current planning and zoning under the city planning umbrella. And then the other thing is how this process will go. So essentially, we took all of those design review elements and codified them, as well as with the neighborhood plans in these specific districts. And so the question is, the administrator would do zoning clearance review for up to four units with 5,000 square feet. Obviously, if they needed a variance, they'd go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Currently, the administrative plan review, this also adds a different layer called the administrative review committee. And that's made up of somebody from each sector that touches development within the city of Cleveland, which is huge because that gets everybody in the room to look at projects in the front end so that once they go through the process, either they can immediately just get approved and go get their permits if they meet the thing, meet the regulations, or they will go to design review if necessary and to you all. And so that's really to ensure so that whatever we're asking them to do in terms of design or the standards, it doesn't violate the fire code. So they got to go back and forth and back and forth. And so the zoning administrator would have this group made up of each of these folks. It's codified. But it does have a statement that states that, you know, not all of these departments may need to be at every meeting, right? Or the other departments may need to be at every meeting. And then the next part is the planning commission review. So 20-plus units or anything over 20,000 square feet. The administrative review committee would act as the advisory committee to planning commission. And then planning commission would see those projects. And then the zoning administrator is also responsible for giving out written interpretations. So that's not uncommon to what we do. They, we don't necessarily give out written interpretations, but we do give interpretations. And so what were some of the key questions? So that Thursday prior to the charrette, we met with city council, as well as staff from all of those sectors. And so what were some of the key questions that we had? What does this really mean for my neighborhood? And how can we expedite development for affordable housing? So under the current code, we have one-family districts, two-family districts, and multifamily residential districts. And it's really hard to build a variety of housing typologies due to the minimum lot size requirements, minimum lot width, minimum dwelling unit size of 950 square feet, floor area ratio of one-size-fits-all setbacks. And so this code, it promotes a variety of housing typologies, mainly the missing middle, right? It encourages gentle density. It does not prohibit smaller or more versatile forms of homes. So we get a lot of calls about tiny homes, but that's not really been something that can be explored here because of all the variants that would be needed or maybe doesn't fit the context of the current street. And then there's the no dwelling unit size. And then it allows for accessory dwelling units, in-law suites, and multi-generational housing. So what does that kind of look like? It allows for triplexes, quadplexes, eight units, eight units, live-work, ADUs, cottage courts, pocket neighborhoods, and multi-generational housing. So the example I included here on the top right corner, on the right-hand side here, is actually a project that came through here that required a new zoning and subvariances, which delayed the development of the project. And it's really three units and eight units, but it sits on East 89th Street among some larger homes and then really fits the context of the street. The Form Based Code will allow that by right in some of the districts. And then it would also allow for live-work across these districts and then the different quadplexes and things of that nature. And then the other big question is, why should my residents want this? Well, first and foremost, it allows for the community vision engagement. So you plan first and then you codify it versus just reacting to projects piecemeal as they come through the system. And then it's much more equitable. It allows access to citizen participation in the decision-making process that historically has not been there for some of our community. It encourages revitalization with a more predictable and streamlined development process. It promotes affordable housing and different housing typologies. It helps small businesses by allowing a mix of uses, especially some of the low-barrier entry-type jobs. Our current code is really for the more white-collar work-at-home type, such as lawyers or doctors that don't really have clients or they're not trading money, right? And then it creates more sustainable, environmentally healthy neighborhoods through proximity to our daily uses. And so the biggest question to discuss with you all out of this as we move forward is, you know, this was really to, this project was really designed to, you know, open the engagement process in the front end, codify that, and then expedite the development process as it goes through. And also in terms of administration, really figuring out where do you all feel comfortable with the unit count? Is this unit count good? Or is it something that you would have rather see us increase or decrease? How many units do you guys want to see? Or how much do you want to move to the staff and the administrative review committee? The other item to add here is, you know, this city has a very strong call with design review. And so maybe for some of those projects in Level Two or Level One, maybe they still need design review, but maybe there's conditions. So if you meet the zoning code and you meet all the standards of form and those things, you're not going to design review to change if they meet the zoning code, but maybe you're looking at materials. And maybe there's a set of six qualifiable standards that the zoning administrator could say, hey, we need this project. This project is kind of wonky. It's out of place. It needs more design review, but it needs explicit like five or six standards so that we're not being arbitrary or egregious, right? In terms of the discretion and not putting too much discretion on the zoning administrator so that people say, well, they were swayed by a councilperson or whatever had you that could cause them to say, well, this project's got to go, but this project doesn't go. That can get inequitable real fast. And so you would have to have a clear standard. So that's a real question that I and our city planning staff have for you all in terms of, are you comfortable with this unit count? Would you like to see it expanded, increased? And that's really it. So if you guys have any questions, comments, concerns explicitly for that in the design review conversation.
I would like to thank the administration and everyone involved to get together. I think it was a little bit of arm twisting to get all the professional affiliations together. And I'll be nice here, but however, you have better outcomes. That's probably the most diverse group of folks I've seen talk about something is substantial in this city in a very long time. And I'm not talking about color or race. I'm talking about just professions and, you know, gender and, you know, and, you know, neighborhood folks, right? Very, very important. I mean, I feel, at least from what I saw there and where this is going, I feel comfortable with, you know, where we are. You're not going to know unless you put it out there, obviously. The thing about Form Based Code, it's prescriptive. So it works. I've seen it work in Cincinnati in my travels there. So I just want to commend Shannon. And I just want, I endorse, obviously, personally, Form Based Code.
Come to the chair, to Shannon. Yeah, I also agree, being present at the workshop. It was great to hear the feedback from practitioners. I think the visual element, I'm a visual learner. So the visual element, I think, is really helpful, particularly for those who do not necessarily have the technical expertise to be able to see both the written word and the visual to help further understand what a particular part of the quote is showing. I think the engagement, again, I wasn't there for the full workshop, but at the point of the presentation last week, it just really seemed like folks were very appreciative. I continue just to be in awe of the level of content that is in your brain, Shannon. We are so fortunate to have you here in partnership, of course, with your colleagues and the director and assistant director. But thank you. It's a lot of information to consume and you have a really great way of communicating in a digestible way that's very practical and matter of fact. And again, I agree with August. You know, you just have to try it, right? And make adaptations along the way. But the level of investment that you all have put in, I have a high level of confidence.
I do, I make one comment, and Shannon was looking at me when this, one comment came up about the floor-to-floor height. And I was going to push back, but obviously, you know, it's so funny when you have developers and architects look at this as always from their lens. It's never from the community's lens. And, you know, the comment that the gentleman made was basically, oh, this is affordable housing, so we should not have taller ceilings, which in my opinion is, should be the other way around. But anyway, I just, I just wanted to thank also the consultant, who I think handled questions wonderfully. They've seen it. They live it. And so I, you know, you have to trust who you bring to the table.
I have one comment. I also want to thank Shannon and the staff and the director. Extraordinary presentation. I agree with Erica. We are lucky to have your expertise specifically here in Cleveland. I'd say you're probably, without knowing this for sure, on par with the best across the country. This issue as we're making this 100-year change, right? Which is what this presentation tees up. It makes me think, though, that Shannon, you specifically, and the director, need to think about the education and kind of understanding of this beyond just you, both in the department and City Hall, because this is going to live beyond you even here. And so I think for you to also think about sort of deep understanding and succession planning for the city in terms of how this gets carried forward for 100 years, that requires also thinking about that. So to think about who else in the department, I know you're already doing this, really works alongside you and can really can take the reins of this over a long period of time so that it's not all within a few people who really, really have the deep understanding of this. This is such a big shift for the city, important one. So that isn't necessarily something to address today, Shannon, but just something to think about what it means. This is also happening because of your leadership and the leadership of the director to move this forward. But I do think the key to the success of this is going to be the deep understanding of others in addition to you there at the city. So that's my really big comment. On this last side, you know, I do think that one of the, the kind of way that the city is organized around design review districts is pretty vast. And so I like the idea that you put forward that maybe in Level One and Two, and you think about how those things can go to local for some of the specificity on design, but they don't necessarily have to come to the city planning commission unless there are disagreements or people want to appeal them. I think that's a good way forward so that things still stay efficient and allow people to get through the process more quickly. So as you continue to think that through, I think, from my perspective, and I'd welcome to see if other commission members agree with this, which is that, is that some of this sort of smaller project size, unit size, can really go through a different process than the larger developments. And we only see them if there are issues. I really like that approach.
Madam Chair, I concur. What I would like to suggest is when we get close to the full commission, maybe we could have that conversation, like to hear other perspectives outside us three.
I would just add, and I think Shannon, you were, Madam Chair, speaking to Shannon, you were alluding to this. So for each of those levels, whatever guidance that is being put forth around like a rubric or, you know, how the determination would be made, like I think that would be helpful too, just for us to understand so that to the chair's point about there being conditions that merit for that particular project to come before us, for us to see on a standard basis, like they did this, they did this, they did not do this, right? So we'll understand why it's coming to us versus why it was not decided at X level, I think would be really helpful.
That's a really good point. Thank you really, thank you so much for your very kind comments. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I would say.
Especially coming from you, Chairwoman. That's a great honor to hear that. So thank you so much. You really kind of made my day. Now, this is definitely not easy. And I think I try to, try my best to make it as understandable as possible for as many people as possible because I know how in the weeds it can be. And it's probably not, most people cannot sit there and verbatim tell you what chapter to go to for whatever regulation they're asking on the spot. So I really appreciate it. But yeah, I think that's a great idea in terms of the knowing why it didn't get approved or maybe why it was escalated to you. I guess the bigger conversation, and I think maybe talking with everybody, if that unit count was sufficient or if it's 20 units too little or too much before it comes to planning commission, right? And so that's, that's a conversation that we've been having ongoing within internally, as well as across departments on how that works. But I think ultimately, having you all helping that decision is really going to push us this next step.
So thank you. And I think we'll have to just keep, keep the conversation going, which is what the point of this is, is that we're going to see you many times. So thank you very much. There's no action here today. It's really more for information and commission members. Anything else before we adjourn and we'll continue the discussion?
Well, Madam Chair, unless there's any further business to be discussed, I'd like to move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Personally have to go. There's, so I do want to, I guess why I wanted to move.
Yes.
But it's okay.
Okay. We will adjourn the meeting. I don't think we need a motion, but thank you. And let's, we'll have a full director's report next time. But thank you very much and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mark. I thought you had an answer, but I could be wrong.
No, I just, I didn't know.
Because I figured that if I didn't do that.